Recording in progress.
Okay, good. Well, welcome to tonight's meeting of the Select Board for the Town of Millis. It's February 14th. We have a number of items to go through this evening, a number of them associated with the DPW projects that are ongoing. So we'll get on right now. First, we're going to start with a few announcements. The first announcement has to do with the open election positions for the town. Anyone who's been following it, you know that you picked up your papers at the town clerk's office. And the following positions are open: the moderator for one year, select board for three years, school committee for three years, board of health, three years, library trustee, three years, planning board, five years, and housing authority, five years. Forty-four signatures are required. We always recommend getting a few extras just in case some are illegible, and submit them to the town clerk's office no later than March 21st at 5:00 p.m. Anybody have any comments? Okay. The next item will be to announce the new water bottle filling stations at VMB. And since that's such an incredibly complex process, I'm going to let Karen Bray explain that to us. Karen?
Very complex indeed. So through the CARES Act, we were able to purchase four water bottle filling stations to replace the current bubblers, as we call them in New England, around the town hall building. So if people bring reusable bottles, they can fill them up at the town hall now. It's filtered refrigerated water, and they're lovely. And it was a free, like I said, to the grant through us, and it helped with keeping people from putting their mouths on the water faucets for COVID. So it's excellent. We're thrilled.
That's great. Well, take advantage of it, everyone. They are pretty neat little stations.
And very green. We're saving a lot of bottles.
Yes, indeed. Okay, now into the scheduled appointments and hearings. First up tonight is our Department of Health Director, John McVeigh, and he's going to discuss the, an update on masking and the town policy and any recommendations he has with respect to masks and town policy. So, Mr. McVeigh?
Good evening, Select Board. Thank you, Chair Jermaine. John McVeigh, Board of Health. If I'm coming in and out, I might have to get rid of the video. So am I choppy? Hear me? You're good.
You're good, John.
And now you're not. I think I have to get rid of the video.
Yeah, get rid of the video.
It allows me to hear me better. Can you hear me better now?
Yes.
So the numbers for COVID are decreasing at a rapid rate, the cases, I should say. Update, so that's a good sign. We're on a extreme downward trend. The numbers are looking very good. Our vaccination rates are up. Aside from, you know, the pre-K, in five to 12, I think by 12 around 60% at this point. Pre-K, you know, six months of plus, or, you know, four, one change, they haven't got the vaccine yet. So that's a 0%. But, you know, when you talk 16 and older, we're looking at, you know, 90% of greater vaccination rates, full vaccination, which is great. That being said, I think that, you know, with the governors and DSSs and DPHs weighing in on February 28th being the day where we can start relaxing, the mask mandate, I would, you know, I would have no issue with that, given these numbers and the way they're trending currently. And I perceive that into the foreseeable future, I think we will be in that same trajectory, and able to tell people in the near future that they don't have to mask. But, that being said, I think as well that people who underlying illnesses or are not vaccinated, that the recommendation is to still protect themselves as long as there's circulating virus. So, you know, I qualify that statement.
Okay. It sounds like then if things continue as they're going and subject to any major change, we at the Select Board probably ought to make some guideline rulings as to how we perceive the town proceeding. And I'd suggest that probably it's for discussion that we follow the governor, and as of the 28th, we begin to open up the town and not have to have enforced masks. Before I open up to the rest of the Board, Mr. Gazinski, I'd like to get your thoughts on that, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I've had the opportunity to speak with Mr. McVeigh at length today in regards to these issues. You know, based upon what I've seen in my discussions with him, I do agree that I think, you know, a recommendation to lift the mask requirement for February 28th is reasonable for town buildings. Certainly to recommend people still be smart about this, you know, keep reasonable social distancing where appropriate. And for those that are not vaccinated, strongly encourage them to wear masks. But I think as of the 28th, it would be more of an advisory or encouragement versus a requirement. And I think that is reasonable at this point, short of any change occurring in the next couple of weeks.
I think that makes some sense. I'll ask the Board members if they have any comments on this. No, I think it makes sense also.
I think it makes sense, but I'd also like to specifically be on the record saying that if you are unvaccinated, you should be respectful and responsible and continue to mask up.
I also think if you have a cold or anything like that, please be respectful and mask up also. Now, this brings up another point. If we do that, do we want to now move to having meetings in-house again? And I think we have to consider that as another piece of this as we open up. So I'll ask the Board members to please weigh in on that.
It makes sense. You know, if we're dropping the mask mandate, then there is no reason why we couldn't meet in person. Although situationally, it's nice that we've all worked out Zoom and we've figured it out. So I think if there are extenuating circumstances, then Zoom could still be used. But I would say that, you know, lifting our strong recommendation of having committees and boards meet via Zoom instead of in-person could also be lifted.
I agree with that. I think it's better to get the committee meetings back up, back in-person if we can. We're dealing with a power issue here, so bear with me.
I think, I agree with you. The other thing to keep in mind is that there will be still the ability for committees to have some members who are unable to attend meet by Zoom. We did vote on that. But the chair has to be present, or whoever is acting as chair for whatever reason, and a quorum majority has to be present at the meeting that's being held. They can't have the quorum otherwise. Okay, then I think that we ought to vote on this. I'll take in recommendation on that.
I move that we lift the mask mandate for all town buildings effective February 28th, 2020.
2022.
Thanks. I'm two years behind here. 2022. And also allow boards and committees to meet in person, but also recommend that if you're unvaccinated or ill, to be respectful and wear a mask.
Second. I move and seconded to recommend that on February 28th, we lift the mask mandate, and also the recently ordered regarding committees meeting in person, that they can now, as of that date, they will be meeting in person with the exceptions as noted previously. I'll poll the Board. Mr. Jermaine, yes? Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schulz?
Yes.
Okay, so that will go into force as of the 28th. The next item on the agenda is the appointment of a new member to the Enterprise Funds Advisory Committee, Mr. McDonough. And I will ask the Board if anyone has had the opportunity to talk with him, and also if Ms. McGinnis is here to offer her comments.
I had the ability to briefly speak with him during an enterprise committee. He seems to have a great background, and I'm sure he'd have a lot of great information and opinions to offer. So I think he would be a good fit.
Okay. Mr. Schulz?
I have not met with him, but I'm looking over his form. I think he would be an asset to the committee.
Okay, anybody else who has any comments? Hearing none. I'll poll the Board to take, I'll first ask that we have a recommendation to appoint this individual to the, Mr. McDonough, to the EFAC.
I move that we appoint Mr. McDonough to the Enterprise Funds Advisory Committee.
Second.
So move and seconded to recommend appointment of Mr. John McDonough to the Enterprise Funds Advisory Committee. I'll poll the Board. Mr. Jermaine, yes? Mr. Schulz?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Okay, so appointed. That's excellent. Tonight, we are going to open the town warrant and probably set tentative dates for items and how we're going to proceed with respect to the town warrant and the town meeting. So I'm going to ask our town administrator, Mr. Gazinski, to please talk with us for a few moments about this.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this is that time of year, as they say, where we, the Board opens the warrant for the annual town meeting, annual spring town meeting for a two-week period. I'd be recommending that the Board open it this evening with a scheduled closure of February 28th. If the Board does take that action tonight, we will notify all boards, committees, and departments in the town, department heads of that, and let them know that they either need to get an article back to the Board by that time, or at least a placeholder for the warrant that the Board can consider. And just a brief update along with that, you know, the Finance Committee, the Board has had your meeting a couple of weeks ago with all the department heads on the budgets. The Finance Committee will be beginning its meetings this Wednesday evening. I believe they're meeting with the fire chief and the police chief this Wednesday. And so the budget process has kicked off as of a few weeks ago for the meetings. And at the next meeting, I will be compiling at least a first draft list of articles for you to review, and those will be fine-tuned over the next three to four weeks. But the process has begun. So again, tonight, I'm requesting that the Board vote to open the spring annual town meeting, and I'll be asking that you close it two weeks from tonight.
The articles for the spring annual town meeting, yes?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll first ask the Board if you have any questions or comments.
None.
Okay, not hearing any. Does anyone else have any comments? Not hearing any. I'll take a motion on opening the town meeting warrant for the spring annual town meeting.
I'll make a motion to open the annual town meeting for the May 2nd town meeting. Open the warrant for the town meeting.
Second.
So move and seconded to open the town warrant for the annual spring town meeting. I'll poll the Board. Mr. Jermaine, yes? Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schulz?
Yes.
Okay, the warrant is now open.
Thank you.
Okay. Well, the next items, we're going to have a few discussions with our DPW Director. And so first up is the snow and ice budget update. So Mr. McKay, how are you this evening? You're muted, by the way. Jim, you're muted.
Muted. I will not miss this one. Tell me that now. I have to say.
I was just going to say that.
You're following my tricks.
Good evening. So the first item on my docket here tonight is to update the Board on the snow and ice budget, which is in deficit. I think the office manager did a printout, I believe you all received it in your packet. It shows right now that the budgets, both, when you combine the both of them, were about $3,000 in deficit. But I can tell you that that does not include anything from yesterday and the past two days. So it's, and as you say, it's an annual, you know, when you open the warrant, you know, this is usually right about this time, that we come to the Board and update. The town administrator has given approval to start spending in deficit, usually. But usually, what we do in Millis, we usually have the Board allow that, you know, that we don't exceed over $100,000, and we would come back to, again, just so the Board are aware, you know, so town meetings can, you know, move forward. So I would ask that we can exceed, do not exceed, another $100,000.
So $400,000, right?
It would...
No, yeah. Well, the basics are, we don't want to exceed a deficit of $100,000.
$100,000, right.
This time.
Yep.
And just to comment to anyone who's listening who may not be familiar, this is, I believe, the only budget item that you're allowed to have a deficit, and that is from the state. So I will take a motion from the Board, before that, let me ask if you have any comments.
Mr. Chairman, actually, there's no actual action is needed from the Board.
Okay.
I, as Chief Administrative Officer, do have the authority to authorize deficit spending for this item. But we wanted to make sure the Board was aware, answer any questions that you have, address any concerns. I think the DPW Director and his staff have done a great job keeping the roads clear and safe, and doing it, you know, in a, as cost-effective a way as possible. But as we know, whenever we have a winter with a number of storms, we do go into deficit spending. So certainly, Mr. McKay and I would be happy to answer any questions the Board may have. And we plan on also just informing the Finance Committee, you know, of the status of the snow and ice budget when they next meet. So, like I said, we'd be happy to answer any questions that the Board may have.
No, I think that Mr. McKay did a good job. I kind of wish he could do a better job of controlling the weather. I just don't understand how we could have a day like yesterday. But at any rate, the bottom line is, this is pretty much beyond our controls. Great job. I have no further comments. Given that the Board members don't seem...
I don't have any comments at this time. You know, I think it's silly to even talk about another $100,000. Reality is, we'll do whatever it is. I mean, we can, you know, so, so we could limit it to $100,000, and if it's, you know, another three blizzards, it blows right past us. So I agree. Whatever is needed to be spent is going to be spent, and that's the way it is.
Absolutely. We cannot control that. At any rate, and Ms. Underhill, do you have any comments?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. McKay and Mr. Gazinski, thank you both very much on that item.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is a review and approval of the DPW excavator contract. So, Mr. McKay?
Thank you. So this appropriation was made at the November town meeting, and we finally, we did, we solicited three bids for this, and we asked that you, the Board, approve the town administrator to sign a contract with Bobcat of Boston, yep, in the amount of $49,813.76. This is, again, this was approved at town meeting. This is an excavator that will be mainly used up at the cemetery. It will be able to get into tight spaces in between the stones when we have to stop, you know, to dig a grave.
I do recall it, but I'll open it to the Board members. Do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Nope.
Okay, then I'll take a motion.
I move that we authorize the town administrator to sign the contract with Bobcat of Boston for the excavator for the DPW in the amount of $49,813.76. Anyone want to second that?
Second.
Moving ahead to the next item. This is very perfunctory, you know?
Okay, I'll poll the Board on that. We need to approve the excavator for the DPW in the amount of $49,813.76, I think is correct. Mr. Jermaine, yes? Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schulz?
Yes.
Okay, so you have your approval.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, we take it out of order, I think, because the PFAS is a little, we have longer to discuss the roads, if you'd like.
Okay. Does anyone object if we change the order and take item 22027 first? Not hearing any objections. Let's have Mr. McKay bring us up to date on the water treatment plan project.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I forward to do, I think it was earlier today, the three bids that came in on Thursday. We're happy with the bid. Kleinfelder is looking into, you know, why there was such a range of discrepancy. I mean, we went from the low bid of $5,175,000 to almost $8.5 million. And, you know, we're going to, we're asking for an answer for that, and we're going to look into that. We have a meeting tomorrow, the town administrator, the finance director, the treasure collector, and myself, that we'll be able to have something ready for you to look at on the 24th. But Mike can, I'm sure he's going to speak, and we're happy with that 5.1, you know, almost 5.2 million to get this project started and rolling. And we can update more on the 24th at the next meeting. Hopefully, we'll have contracts for you to award.
Mr. McKay?
Oh, excuse me, Mr. Gazinski. Mr. Chairman, yes, we'll have, we'll have much more detailed information for your next meeting, two weeks from tonight. Certainly, we're very pleased that Winston Builders submitted a quote, a bid. Otherwise, we'd be having a very different conversation right now. So we're pleased with that. It's still, you know, a bit higher than we had originally hoped, but this is, this is the climate we're in, in the, in different building industries. And, you know, we will be having that meeting, as Mr. McKay said, to look at the financial end of it, with the amounts that were appropriated, the amounts that will be due, not just for the contract, for the construction, but also for engineering. So we'll have an analysis and a breakdown of where we're at at your next meeting. But we do feel we have a path forward with this, with this low bid. And, you know, we did get some information back from Kleinfelder just this afternoon, saying that they've done a review of the, of the company, and have found nothing but positive comments. So that's a very good thing. And like I said, we'll have more information for you, and perhaps we'll even be ready for you to award the bid as early as two weeks from tonight. So we just want to provide this information hot off the presses from late last week, and, you know, answer any initial questions you might have. But we'll be gathering more information for your, for your meeting in two weeks.
Mr. Gazinski, Mr. McKay, do either of you have any knowledge of these three bidders? Previous experience with them or anything else?
Yeah, I haven't, no.
I do not. I do not. But I know that Kleinfelder's done some, done a bunch of research since the bid opening last Thursday. And again, they, they feel that at this point, with the amount they've vetted, they feel very comfortable. We'll certainly be doing a little more research between now and when we ask for an award. But right now, the indications are coming back very positive.
Well, that's good, because there's quite a spread there from...
There is indeed.
5.2 to about 8.5 million. So it's...
We saw that on, we saw that on other projects too, at the firm building committee. Some guys bid just, you know, eight million bucks. If I get it, I'd be glad to do it. But I'm not expecting it.
Understood. But I, again, it would have been nicer to have a few of them, a few bids closer, but so be it. Okay, then we'll look at that the next time around. I guess the next thing up is to discuss paving sidewalks, and I suppose roads is mixed into that.
Yes. So thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, there was a lot of information sent. There are a lot of numbers there. And I think it's just to show you, you know, what town meeting and what Chapter 90 fund paid for last year. You know, we do have an estimated amount of reserves that was left over from Chapter 90, money of $153,356. And town meeting, there was a balance of $23,650. And with the appropriation that we know of now, it hasn't, we have a projection, but it hasn't been allocated till, you know, that we can spend until July 1st is $278,000, which leaves us with an amount of $454,990. And that's pretty close to what we've, we've had without another infusion from, you know, town meeting. And I think this is what the discussion is. I did put in there for the capital planning committee, the amount of pretty much what we got last year of $160,000. Don't know if that's available. You know, it's just, you know, the town administrator, myself, we discussed it and felt that, you know, if you don't ask, I mean, you're not going to get, you know, not that you're not going to get it. But so, you know, and that would lead to the discussion, you know, if we go at the $454,000, you know, where would the Board like us to look towards? I mean, if, we all know driving around, we've done, we've put a good dent in some of the side roads in the past couple of years. Some of the major thoroughfares in Millis, you know, and that's why they're going to be more expensive, are going to have to start to be looked at. Main Street from Hammond Lane to the Midway Town Line is atrocious. It's blown out like you could not believe, to a point where we're not sure if patching it, even with the skid steer, you know, the grinder and all that could, could make those repairs. Another option that we did discuss is, because there was such a want of sidewalks, you know, something to be done with sidewalks. I did have GCG look into replacing, actually, replacing and putting an extension of sidewalks on Pleasant Street. There's a good 200 and something feet on Pleasant Street that there's no sidewalk. When you come up Village Street, and then when you come down from Main Street, there's a gap of several hundred feet that it's missing. And then another major project, and what we would do is we would replace the sidewalks, add the sidewalks, and we would repave the road on Pleasant Street. And we'd pretty much do the same on Plain Street. We would replace the sidewalk on one side, and we would extend the sidewalk from the side on the gas station side, from Main Street to the entrance of the high school. There's actually a... There's actually a, you know, the entrance of the high, high school walkway there, because there are sidewalks there, and over the years, they've been, just been, you know, ripped up, taken apart. But with that, you need, that has to be engineered. Both of that, both of those would have to be engineered. And a cost, to do both of them, and I think I gave you that, the breakdown is, you know, sixty thousand six hundred and sixty dollars. And to do that, we, we have the funding to do, in place to do that right now. I would use the twenty-three six fifty left over from Town Meeting, and I would ask for the remainder of it to come out of the balance from the FY twenty-two, Chapter Ninety funding. And I think even with that hundred and sixty, we wouldn't be able to do much more than those two projects. I think that that would be, we would have to put them out to bid, and, so it's just a general discussion. I think Mike and myself just need to know where, you know, what, what, what is the board's interest in, you know, if we don't do those two streets, there's sections of Village Street that need to be done. We would look at measuring up and maybe doing half of Main Street this year. And I guess, what is the interest of Town Meeting giving us another appropriation that's what is a big driving force of this?
I don't think we can answer all that.
Right.
But I'll open it to the other board members for discussion at this point.
I think that the, the stretch on Main Street from Hammond to Midway would be really urgent. I'd say, I'd rank that around the top. I love the idea of the sidewalks in the street on Pleasant Street, because there are a few, there's a couple, like, really treacherous potholes there. But I also live on Pleasant Street, so I don't want to be biased. But I do, so the sidewalks, though, on Plain Street is really interesting to me, because on that side of the road, where the high school entrance is, I didn't even realize that there, there are some houses that look like there is no sidewalk in front of them going up that stretch. And I think, I think that one would be pretty important as well for, you know, walkability in town, near the schools, wrapping back over onto Main Street at this gas station. So, you know, I guess, I guess I would rank the ones that we discussed, the Main Street and, and the high school, the, the Main Street and the Plain Street sidewalk. And it's certainly pleasant if you have, if we, if we can, but...
Mr. Schultz?
Yeah, I, I think the most important road is the one oh nine, you know, Hammond out. I think that's clearly the road, I think we've all identified it. If I had to pick one, if I had to pick two, I'd say the other half of Spring Street, it's gotten really bad right now, maybe it can just be patched. But, you know, after you cross over, uh, Plain Street, you know, Spring Street extension, I guess, is what it is. And on the subject of Spring Street, can we get those speed bumps better marked?
Yep.
They're, they're, I, I drove in Mexico a few times, and these are what's up in the middle of the Mexican highways. They really do slow you down, but it's not twenty miles an hour, it's ten miles an hour, if you're lucky. I had a bumper fall off a van down there. But, anyway, so, I mean, not on that, in Mexico. But those, those bumps are huge, and they're not well-marked anymore. I think the snowplows have scraped the markings off them. I go quite slow because I know they're there, but other people have commented that you're airborne. Okay? So, I appreciate the speed bumps, but I think this has to be more indicated. But the other half of that is on the sidewalks. I guess my question is, since there is a good sidewalk on one side of, of Plain Street, and I understand we want to connect the two, is it better to put a sidewalk where there is none, like Spring Street going to the school, going down that way, where kids walk all the time, where there is no option to cross it, a crosswalk, and get on the sidewalk? Or is it better to extend? And I don't know the answer, but I'd like some community feedback on that one, because right now, with the crosswalk, the kids can leave school, cross, and get over onto a sidewalk. But on Spring Street, there's, there's nothing. By Tangerini is everywhere else where people are, are walking quite a bit. Now that the traffic is slower, it's less of an issue, but, but I think that that's the question, do we duplicate sidewalks, or do we put sidewalks if we don't have any?
That's a good point. So, on, I guess, on that note, if I were to piggyback on that, I completely agree that Spring Street would be huge if that was viable. The, the Pleasant Street work, you know, it doesn't, there is just a small stretch that does not have a sidewalk. So, if that can be added, then that whole street is now connected from Village all the way to Main, which might be less of an undertaking than, you know, putting in, like you said, a double sidewalk on Plain. And if Spring Street has whatever challenges that make that not possible, then I guess I'd revert to the Pleasant Street plan to get something in place.
I think it sounds like, Jim, if you could get us some estimates on what it would cost to do some of those sidewalks, it'd give us a better idea, we'll be able to discuss it in a little better detail. I have no idea how much Main Street's going to be, but anybody who's driven down there recognizes that something has to be done. We can't continue in that area the way it is. So, go ahead, I'm sorry, Craig, go ahead, I didn't mean to
No, that's, that's, I was, I, I, and I, I don't even know if all of Spring Street needs to be done, but if you would go from one end or the other, two Tangerinis past the school, that would at least give an option for people to safely walk to the farm or walk to the school.
Yep.
Not from both directions, but, and, and I'm not the engineer on this, so you please tell me what works and what doesn't, but that's my thought on it.
So, how long do you think it would take you to give some estimates on that, Jim?
I, I could have Mike take a look at all of this. We did look at, he's already doing some survey work in that area for a drainage issue. The, the two that we looked at, especially on Pleasant Street, Pleasant Street, if you know, I mean, that's where the old trolley car used to go down, that's why those telephone poles are set, set so far back. There'd be no taking there, there would, it, it's just a straight design. And, and you're correct, I mean, we'd be able to walk from the bridge at, at the Chiles, all the way to almost Oak Grove, if, if that section was done. So, I, yeah, I, I can def-, I'll, I'll, I'll call Mike up and, and get, get your answers. You know, I'm sure he can look at it, and he can check, especially on Spring Street, I think there's a little difference with the, you know, land taking and putting
Right.
We'd have to go on the house side, I think, more than on Tangerini's side. So, yeah, I, I'll definitely, I'll, I'll talk to him and, and move forward. And we do have some money in the sidewalk fund. I didn't add any of that to that, I believe there's like sixty to seventy-seven thousand dollars that, you know, if it's a new sidewalk, we could definitely use it for this type of project.
Sure.
Well, you could vote that as part of this project.
That sounds good.
On your recommendation.
Yep.
Okay, I will ask if there are any questions from the audience? Any members of the community?
Karen and Mike, there's no, I find to be refreshing for the fact that there might be something else going on tonight that I wasn't aware of until last week.
I completely concur with what the board is saying.
Yes, I will definitely, I'll ask Mike to size up Main Street for us, and, and we'll measure it up right now, I can get our guys to measure it up, and, and if it, you know, and we can get some sort of, an estimate from what we paid last year. Yes, that can be done. Okay, and that's great conversation, and now we know where we're going. Mike and myself know where to start looking.
Thank you very much.
When I say Mike, this Mike here.
Too many mics.
Got it, yeah. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I guess now we're on to, and correct me if I'm wrong, discuss proposal for warrant articles, charter changes. The reason I ask that this be on warrant is, as you know, at the Springtown Meeting, the charter changes were deferred in a, a way that they did a special type of vote. They were, it was an article that was supposed to be divided, but it never got that far. So, what I'm suggesting, if the board is willing, and I'm gonna open it for discussion to the board, is that we place that article as five separate articles on the town warrant for the Springtown Meeting. So, let me open it, that way we can discuss it and decide if we want to do so on this board.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I think that's a great idea. I think, I think a little bit more backup information might be needed for a couple pieces of it, but I do think that it is wise to break them up into five so that they could be each individually considered, because what happened at Town Meeting was really just one piece of it that stopped the whole process, so no debate could even occur. So, I would definitely be in favor of separating that out.
I'd actually consider the same thing, but I'd try to restrict it to three or maybe four articles. I don't think we need to put the finance committee line language in there, just drop that, that's entirely inside, and I don't see any reason wasting time discussing that. They didn't want to change it to warrant committee, they want to be compromised, let's just avoid the change. No, simplify it. The other piece is where we change the name of town administrator to town administrator chief executive officer, administrative officer, rather, section, that might not be needed either. I mean, that's, would be nice to put in there, but I'm trying to get this thing into as few articles as possible with the hope of passing two or three of them. So, so I think the stuff that's more inside to us, we can leave out. I think the select board size, the town clerk, and the, and, and the description of the town administrator's job, not a job description, but the detailed description of what that role and process entitles, entails, rather, is, are the three items I'd look to put in.
I tend to agree with you, except I, unless I hear it back from the select board, the not select board, excuse me, the finance committee, that they don't want, that they want to rescind that article, I think it's a courtesy to them, it was recommended. I hesitate to just unilaterally say we're going to not put it back on the warrant from that perspective. I don't disagree, I have my own feelings on it, but I try not to let my feelings interfere with what the FinCom might want to say, and what the members who made the recommendation on the charter review committee came up with. And I think it's in fairness to them that we do this.
Well, we abandoned what the charter review committee came up with, which was to change it to warrant committee exclusively, that. And we're a committee of three, not a committee of, we did math, twelve. So, I think it's for us to decide what we put on the warrant and them to review the warrant. And honestly, if we're, if we're gonna have to concur and confer with the finance committee on what we put on the warrant in every case, I don't think that's what our job is. I, I, we can talk to them and see if there's a strong opinion, but I'm strongly in favor of keeping it to three items, three items only, the three are the most important, and taking the other ones out that just add noise to the discussion, that nobody outside of the finance committee and the select board actually cares about.
Well, I guess, my view is, I don't disagree, the, the select board will make the final decision, and I've always stood by that. But I do believe that I want to hear if the finance committee has very strong feelings, and that's all I'm looking for. If they do, I'm willing to consider it. And it's not my vote alone, but I think it's important that we give them that option. The other, I don't have any strong feelings about the other way. In terms of the three primary articles that we are, are, I don't know if I want to call them articles yet, but the proposed three articles, I think those we can recommend if we want to put them on, we should indicate that we want those on the town articles for the Springtown Meeting.
And the way I'd break them, with the town clerk, that one can be done entirely by the town, there's no state, which was one of the members of the audience's biggest concern, that we were giving up our right to self-government by asking the, the state to ratify what we pass, you know, the home rule petition that we have. So, the town clerk can be changed with just a Town Meeting and a ballot vote. The powers and appointments, they're ninety percent of it, from what the attorney said last time, can be covered in the bylaws, which is just a Town Meeting vote. And that eliminates a lot of the founded concerns that some of the select board had, that we're making it too hard to change what they perceived as a job description, which I don't, I perceive it as a description of the powers and authorities, but, but that would be easy for any select board or any Town Meeting to change, it wouldn't have to go through the, the whole charter review process. So, put that one into a bylaw. And the select board, I would couch it as, listen, we can move to three to five with state involvement, or we can let people collect a thousand signatures to form a charter review committee, drag it out for eighteen months beyond their inception date after they're elected on, so possibly in the next five to ten, five years, we could have a select board move from three to five. If people are interested in the select board moving from three to five, it can be done, but it has to involve the state ratifying what we voted as a town, which, yeah, maybe that one doesn't get passed because there's eloquent speakers on the other side of that, far more eloquent than I. But, but at least it separates it into three manageable sections, two of which we completely and totally control, and the third one would require the state to get involved in, potentially, to ratify our, our vote.
Those are precisely the recommendations of Town Council, by the way. I'm sure you've seen that. And I tend to agree. I think it's also important to point out that although we had, we heard during the Fall Town Meeting that the home rule hadn't been invoked, it turns out that is not the case. We had used home rule before, so there are a number of issues there. I think breaking it the way we're looking at it, the important thing tonight is how we, is that we want it on the, as part of the articles, and how we structure it is something for us to work out over the next week, uh, next meeting and get that resolved. So, I tend to go along with the basics of what you've discussed, which is right in line with what Town Council has proposed that we do. I will ask, Ms. Underhill, do you have any comments?
I, I tend to agree with, with what Craig said. I, I do like the idea of a courtesy check with the finance committee. I mean, from where I'm sitting, to go from finance committee to warrant and finance committee, doesn't seem like a big deal at all, but maybe there's a way, they're meeting on Wednesday, so it, maybe, is there some kind of way we could just get that question thrown in there on Wednesday?
I don't think we, we can make a decision tonight, and we can always change our decision. It doesn't much matter. I mean, we have multiple opportunities between now and Springtown Meeting to modify the warrant as we determine, so
So, in that case?
I want to be clear, I'm not opposed to changing the name, I just don't want to spend twenty-five minutes at Town Meeting discussing it when we've got three other critical pieces to talk about.
Yeah.
That would be, that's my opposition to any consideration of it, not that, boy, wouldn't it be great to change the name, but I don't want to spend twenty-five minutes talking about when whoever was on the finance committee in nineteen fifty-seven, and they were proud to be on the finance, you know? I can see this droning on.
So, I would agree with Craig, then, Chairman Jermaine, I would say, drop the finance committee piece altogether, have the clerk issue, the select board issue, and the town administrator description thing in there. And I would also like to see, maybe even at the same time, or after, if it needs to be in an order, but the powers of appointment via bylaw. I think that's a great idea. And I think reducing the complexity of any of these in terms of, you know, going to the charter, if it has to be in the charter, great. If we can achieve it with a bylaw, even easier. So, that, that's the route I'd go.
Okay, well, we do have a recommendation from Town Council that it should be a bylaw, so that is a given, and I agree with Mr. Schultz on that.
Yeah, the powers of appointment, I left that one off, I'm sorry. Is that, can that be changed by bylaw, or does that have to be a charter change?
I believe, I believe the power of appointment has to be a charter change.
Oh, okay.
Verify that one more time. I have a note elsewhere from Town Council that it was a charter change, only because of the fact it was written into the Charter.
So that's my understanding as well. If it changes anything in regards to what's currently in the Charter or is contrary to anything, it would need to be a charter change.
Right.
Then I'll stand corrected. I'll have four items possibly as different warrants. I don't want to put any of them together because if there's any mixing, matching, I think it causes us trouble.
Agreed, agreed. Okay, do we want to recommend that these then go on the, as articles, and we will refine them over the next couple of weeks?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gazinski, do we need to vote on that?
It would, it would be good to, at least for the board to direct me and the staff to work on that. And then obviously, once you see the final language that's proposed, then you can vote to decide whether to include that in the warrant.
Then I will take, I'll make, I'll make a motion that we put three articles on the warrant. The first article being the powers and duties of the Town Administrator as a bylaw change. The second article being the Town Clerk being moved from elected to appointed as a charter change. The third article being the, the appointing authority of the, the powers and appointment of the Select Board as a charter change. And the fourth article being the composition of the Select Board as a charter change.
Second.
To move and seconded to place the four articles on, as Craig just noted, I am not going to try to repeat those. But I will poll the board. Mr. Jermaine?
I was building up on complexity.
I understand. I just don't want to get into the detail. Okay, Mr. Jermaine, yes, Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Gazinski, DeMarzo, are those adequate for you?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that, that will work for me.
Excellent.
Yes, sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. And I still will repeat, if somebody comes back and says, oh, they're adamant about something else, we may discuss it, we may not. That's our prerogative, and we reserve that right. Okay. The next item for discussion is the proposed Stormwater Credit Manual Policy Changes. I believe each of you received the updates from, again, Town Council on pages 10 and 11. I believe those were the two pages. Correct me if...
That would be really helpful if the pages had numbers on them.
Yeah.
What page is it in our handout? Because I'm on page 50.
The pages actually do, the pages do have numbers at the bottom right.
Oh, really hard to see.
Oh, that's a number. Okay, let me, let me zoom. Page seven.
Come through, well.
What page number is it?
It's nine and 10 on that. I'm sorry. You look for the blue.
Yeah, there we go, I found them. And I'm reading it on this little tablet thing, and I keep trying to erase it. I thought it was a mark on my tablet. There we go.
I have problems...
I did read them, but I couldn't find them quickly here.
Okay. I think although the language tends to, in my estimation, pretty much meet the comments that we made, I think it's important to reiterate a very important thing here. And that is, our object is to encourage better stormwater use. By the same token, recognize that any credits we offer doesn't change the, ultimately, the amount that has to be paid into the Stormwater Enterprise Fund. So it means that if you offer credits, ultimately, what you're doing is perhaps just increasing by some small margin the amount that everybody's going to end up paying. So, you know, it's, you don't get something for nothing out of this. But the key here had to do with our discussion of encouraging enhancement of stormwater movement to better open spaces and so forth. So I don't know, I assume both of you have had a chance to look at these, and I don't know if you have any comments on them.
These aren't the only edits we're planning to put forth, correct?
Well, they, here's what's happened. This is what came back. There were others that we had, and what I don't want to get into is a protracted discussion this evening. None of us need that. I'll be honest with you. I think there were other, in fact, I know there were because I have my comment sheets here, that weren't covered. So the question is, would it be useful for us to schedule a time, one more time, to go through these, discuss them, and any others that weren't covered in here? Or would you prefer to send notes to Mr. Gazinski, and then he and I will make sure that we go to Town Council and cover some of the issues that we don't see, think were appropriately covered in these comments?
Give me one second here.
Oh, yeah, take your time.
Yeah, I had a difficult time cross-referencing that what we asked for and what wasn't, were included.
All right, so what was, so on page nine, page nine, the bold areas were changed as well, not just the colored, correct? So if you look at small user credits, it's for properties with two to four billing units, which is raised from what it was, right? Wasn't it one to three?
It was, no, with two to four. I've got the original document in front of me.
Okay.
Was it the original two to four?
If you look at small user credits, it says specifically for properties with two to four billing units. And that is exactly what was written
Okay, so...
in the document.
One of my biggest concerns with the manual at the time, and maybe this is covered elsewhere, but one of my biggest concerns was having residential folks who happened to have a higher billing unit kind of lumped into the same thing as a large commercial property, for instance, where they'd have to get like a signed engineer report and stuff. So I was interested in seeing what we could work with that. Just not that, you know, we try to take any accountability away, but a homeowner with, I mean, it's still a homeowner. It's not a commercial property. I just feel like those two things would be different.
Yeah, I think what was missed here is if you took out the limitation on two to four billing units, and we had discussed that for residential properties, in essence, that wasn't going to be a limitation that we were going to encourage. But what I didn't, what I was looking at when you got to some of the others was the wording didn't seem consistent with that, you know, when he made, the attorney made the changes. So that's what was bothering me. And that's why I'm saying, I think we need to have each of you go through and raise the comments such as you're raising. Send them to Mike, our Town Administrator, or Karen, Operations, and then we'll take them to Town Council as consolidated and see if we can do it. Mr. Gazinski, is that an appropriate thing to do?
Yes, sir. It's the perfect thing to do, to take the next step, in my opinion.
Then can I request that we get this in a Word document that we can use the track changes on so that I'm not, you're not... This is for your sake. For you, I'm not trying to read any scrolls that I write because otherwise it's going to be annotating a piece of paper, which is going to be horrible.
Yeah, we can certainly do that.
And just, just so I'm clear, from, from this document that's included in our packet, pages nine and 10, the edits are the sections that are in color?
Yes. But I will also say that I have a copy in Word. So that should have come to each of you. If not, I will forward the copy I have.
I may have gotten it in Word, but I read, I read off of this one.
That's fine.
If I don't have it already.
Is it okay if I send this to each of them?
Yeah, absolutely. The edited version, so we can see the changes?
Yeah, if you just want to send the Word version of what's in the packet tonight, that's absolutely fine. And then if each of you want to mark it up and send it to me, not to each other, but to me, we can, or Karen, we can pull, pull that all together for a discussion at another meeting.
Fine.
Okay.
We'll make sure that gets out there as quickly as possible. I can't do it right this instant, but I will get it, get my copy out to you very quickly. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Charles River Pollution Control District Meeting Briefing. I attended most of the meeting. I had another commitment, as Mr. Gazinski knows, to go to at that time. But I was there for most of it. I believe we forwarded on to you the presentation that was made. Basically, there's work to be done, standard OPEB information that they had, and overall, things just dealing with how they're managing the entire Charles River Pollution Control District. So nothing particularly outstanding, just what I'd call your standard annual, let's look at it, let's revise it, let's make the changes as appropriate. However, having said that, I did have that presentation sent to you. I don't know if you have any comments. So please, if you do, let me know what they are. Okay. Does anyone in the audience have any comments? I don't think we have too many in the audience right now.
Yeah, you can stop asking that.
I'm asking anyway. Okay, I'm moving on at this point.
Such an optimist that we're that big of a draw.
Valentine's Day, no doubt.
I wasn't quite going there, Erin, but now...
I was going to say, is that what it is?
I'm not even touching it. I forgot about it.
It would just become horrible, I don't know.
Okay.
Don Northgraves did this once, and you'll notice he doesn't serve on any committees anymore.
We have approval of Millis Youth Baseball Parade on April 24. And since I'm not an expert in this area, I'm going to ask if Ms., Mr. Gazinski or Ms. Burey are willing to assist us with this.
I will defer that to Ms. Burey, Mars, for her commentary.
Well, being the baseball expert that I am, no, I...
Yes.
I, this is Mike Leach, who is, I believe, the president of the Millis Youth Baseball, very similar to Little League, but not called Little League. And they do a parade every year for opening day. And so that's what this is. It's just a request to actually hold the parade on. I need my glasses, I'm sorry. Sunday, April 24. It will start about 9:00 a.m. Up Spring Street, from back parking lot of Clyde Brown, then it goes down Route 109, onto, taking a right on 115, and into the baseball fields. And it takes about 20 minutes. And they are inviting the Select Board to join if they would like to show up and celebrate. And that's about it. So the Police, Fire, and GPW are all aware. I sent this to them, and they are in favor of it. They're used to doing this with them, and it didn't seem that there were any other conflicting things going on in town. So I would recommend that you approve this request.
Open it for comments from the board.
Let's just watch for tripping hazards on the speed humps on Spring Street. But other than that...
I don't think they'll go that way. I think they're going to be just fine, actually.
No, other than that...
They may have to wear their hiking shoes and climb over them. I don't know.
Yeah. But other than that, it's a, it's a, I mean, I, I had three kids that were in the program, and...
I'm sure.
That was the farthest they progressed in baseball, the parade. That was the highlight of their career. But, but it was a, it was always fun.
I think anything like this in town is great. I think it, it does kind of, it's fun, and I think it does kind of draw people together, so.
It's really fun. It's really fun.
I'll take a motion on this one.
I'll move that we approve the youth baseball parade on Sunday, April 24 at 9:00 a.m., going from the back of Clyde Brown Spring Street up 109 and onto 115.
Second. So move and seconded to approve the youth baseball parade on Sunday, April 24 at 9:00 a.m., from 109 to 115. I'll poll the board. Mr. Jermaine, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Okay, so approved. So great. Water Sewer Approval Commitment. So...
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there's two different commitments we're asking the board to approve this evening. The first is for January of 2022, a water and sewer department commitment for a total of $1,618.22.
I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the water and sewer commitment for January 2022 in the amount of $1,618.22.
Craig, you're muted. Second. To move and seconded to approve the January 2022 water sewer commitment to the collector in the amount of $1,618.22. I'll poll the board. Mr. Jermaine, yes. Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
So approved.
Thank you.
Gazinski?
And the second one, Mr. Chairman, is the Quarterly Bill Run Commitment for the third quarter for water of $241,255.33, for the capital assessment of $123,738.38, for the sewer, $295,451.33, for the cross fees, $5,601.75, for the on-off fees, $242.58, for a grand total of $666,289.37.
Any discussion? I'll take a motion.
I move that we approve the Quarterly Bill Run Commitment for the third quarter of fiscal year 2022 for the water sewer department commitment. And do I have to say each one or...
The grand total is by...
Okay. For a total of $666,289.37.
Second. Move and seconded to approve the third quarter water sewer department commitment to the collector in the amount of $666,289.37. I'll poll the board. Mr. Jermaine, yes. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
So approved.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Draft Minutes. I have to be honest, I did not pay them a lot of attention, and I should have. So...
These were actually the ones that Maureen did when I was away. I have not read through the...
In case, I'm sure they're very accurate.
I'm sure they're much more accurate than mine.
Well, I will go back to the header as my name's spelled wrong. The first paragraph, that's the only thing I'm checking for. See if there's an E on the end.
Oh, yeah.
Should be an E on the end of Mr. Schultz's name.
That I do know. I probably, I haven't read through these yet either.
And throughout the document, it has to be...
It appears correct everywhere else.
No, at least it's under 21017, it's not.
Okay.
All right. We'll check that.
I'm going to run a search on it now.
But having said that, how does the rest...
They read fine, it was just that.
Okay.
I'll make a motion we accepted subject spelling things correctly, namely my name.
Second.
Fair enough.
It's the move and seconded to accept the minutes as written with the exception of the spelling of Mr. Schultz's name, which will be corrected. I'll poll the board. Ms. Underhill?
Yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes. Okay. So... Mr. Jermaine, yes. Okay. So, so much for that. I think that pretty well wraps up the basic open meeting for tonight. I appreciate everyone who did attend, although I don't see a lot of others on right now.
Nobody attended, Peter. Nobody attended. Jim McKay was attending. He was here to present.
John McKay and Jim McKay both attended. Okay. But we are now going to adjourn into executive session. So what I'm going to do is poll the board to move to executive session. At the end of executive session, we will come out and quickly, briefly open this meeting again, and then close the meeting. So I will now poll the board to move to executive session. Mr. Jermaine, yes? Ms. Underhill?
Yes. But do we have to say why we're going into executive session?
Oh, excuse me, yes. To conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with union personnel, the Massachusetts Coalition of Police, Local 171, Millis Police Association Dispatcher, and SEIU. I apologize for having not noted that.
Seems like you're.
Then yes.
Mr. Schultz?
Yes.
Mr. Jermaine, yes? Okay. I'll see you all in executive session. Thank you.
Thank you.
Goodbye, everyone.
Good night.